Okay, we're live.
Okay, welcome to the Montgomery County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be livestreamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County, will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197 and extended by House Bill 404. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. Okay, first up, we have the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Stormwater Update. Paul?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator. We, this is a program, the Ohio EPA Stormwater Program is a program that's required by federal and state law, but it's also very critical to keep our water clean here in the Dayton region, which, as we know, is one of our greatest assets for safe and healthy living in the area and attracting new businesses and so forth. So, thank you Commissioners and Administrator for funding this program over the last several years, and we're at a point where we're ready to pass a resolution a little bit later here in the meeting, but Mark Stewart's been honchoing this program for the last several years, and I'll turn it over to Mark to do a short presentation.
Thank you, Paul. I am going to be doing a quick presentation here on kind of what details the Stormwater Management Program has in it, just kind of quick overview. So let's go ahead and see if this will let me share the screen here. So this is kind of the kickoff of the Stormwater Management Program or the Stormwater SWMP for our Engineers Office and put together with the Fire and Rescue Department here. So kind of, as Paul was saying, our task and purpose is kind of to, you know, keep waters clean and kind of deal with items related to construction runoff and list discharge amongst other things. So to keep it short and sweet, I'm going to kind of just go through some of these, the history of the program a little bit, kind of the urbanized area and how it looks now, and the minimum control measures for which we have to meet the requirements of the EPA permit. So it all started back in 1987 with Clean Water Act, which resulted from the Kaihoga River catching on fire was kind of the big instigator. And then in 1990 was the Phase One Program, and this brought in large urbanized areas. There's five in Ohio, City of Dayton.
Mark, there's a couple of, there's a little window that's covering up part of the slides. I don't know if you can do that or if Emily, there we go.
All right.
Thanks.
So yeah, so the City of Dayton was one of the Phase One communities. And then in 1999, we had the start of the Phase Two Program, which started to look at urbanized areas. And kind of to get into more local, in 2003, the MS4 Permit or the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit was established, and in 2004, it was started in Montgomery County with the co-comity townships. And then in 2017, the Engineers Office took over management of the program, and we're kind of working on these items now to kind of bring things up to meet the permit. So this is the urbanized area, is the hatched area defined by the 2010 census. This is defined by population density. This area will be updated when eventually they complete the 2020 census, collection data and information, and density populations. So it'll probably expand a bit, and we'll see if any areas additionally need to be brought in. So there are six areas, are six minimum control measures that we have to address as part of the permit. The first one is the public outreach and education. This is, in the program, we have a kind of detailed, the county's agreement with the Conservancy District through the Aquifer Preservation Subdistrict. And this is, there's a lot of municipalities and organizations that are part of this. And we have, part of that agreement was to handle the education and outreach with the public, so they kind of handled that portion of it for us. MCM2 is the public involvement and participation. Once again, as with MCM1, we have an agreement with MCD as part of that Aquifer Preservation Subdistrict to handle a lot of the public involvement, and this handles things like stream cleanups and just activities with the public to get hands-on experience. Minimum Control Measure Three, this is where we deal with illicit discharge detection and elimination, and this is where we try to locate possible breaks in a line or illegal discharges from industrial activities, those sorts of things. And part of this is the mapping of the storm system and then our dry weather screens, and a big portion of this, which the EPA is happy to work, finally able to get in place, is kind of our process for how we're going to enforce this through existing laws and regulations. Minimum Control Measure Four, this is the Stormwater Management, or the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans that developers, construction companies have to submit to us for review, and then we perform inspections during construction to ensure that all of their erosion control items are in place, and we reduce runoff from construction sites. And then Minimum Control Measure Five, this is the post-construction best management practices or BMPs, and this is where we handle things during the design stage that is the long-term maintenance and pollution reduction from developments and construction activities. And then Minimum Control Measure Six, this is the items that the county has to do in order to make sure we're following these practices internally, and this has to do with a lot of the county on facilities that don't fall under other EPA permits and permitting processes. So these, right now, we have three facilities that we are looking at, we are checking on a few others to see if they fall under a different permit or if we have to include them as part of our inspection process. And then one last thing that's in the Stormwater Management Program that could be looking at passing, is kind of the things that we are targeting for our goals for this permit cycle and how we're going to try to meet all of those goals and how we're measurement and what we see as success under this permit cycle. So the one last item that I will address with this is, we have to update this with the updated permit. So I am, right now, the EPA is about two years behind on getting that permit updated because of all the COVID stuff going on in the last year, and we have six months from when they eventually pass that permit, so you guys might be seeing an update of this in the near future, but right now, we just wanted to keep things moving forward, so that's kind of where we're at. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Paula needs to answer them, so. All right. Oh, I just hit the wrong thing here. There we go.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. If any of our viewers would like a copy of this presentation, is it available?
The presentation, we can make it available on our website, on the County Engineers website. We have a section there called just Stormwater Management, the full Stormwater Management Plan along with, and we'll put the presentation up there afterwards.
Good.
Mark and Paul, I'd just like to thank both of you. This is, this is a lot of work. You work with our contractors, you make sure that contaminants stay out of our, our stormwater system, and I just want to say thank you for the presentation and for the work you're doing here. It is vitally important to the community, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, here we go again, County Engineer.
Good afternoon again. So we have several resolutions for approval today. First off is the Resolution 21-205, to approve the adoption of the Stormwater Management Program for Montgomery County for small municipal separate storm sewer systems located within rapidly developing watersheds to discharge stormwater under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. 206 is to authorize an agreement with Barrett Paving Materials, Inc. for the Asphalt Concrete Resurfacing Program countywide at their lowest and best bid of $2,663,694.41 through October 1st of 2022. 207 is to reject the lowest bid by STRM Construction for the Whip Road Bridge Replacement Project and authorize an agreement with Outdoor Enterprise at their lowest and best bid of $355,230 through May 27th of 2022. Rejecting a low bid is somewhat unusual for us, but the actual low bid contractor did not have, they were not going to perform more than 50% of the work, which is part of our requirements, and they didn't have prequalifications in order to perform more than 50%. So we, we worked with them, we explained things to them, and they, they agreed it was their, their mistake resulted in that, so there's, there won't be any challenge to this, but, and Outdoor Enterprise, a company that we have never contracted directly with, but we've had experience with them and some work they've done in townships, and we did it, we did a purchase order with them to do a repair on a North Dixie Drive project a short while ago. We've had really good experience with them, so we don't have a problem. And the low bid was only about $5,000 less than the second low bid. 208 is to approve the 2021 Permissive License fee projects for municipalities and authorize the auditor to transfer funds to the county engineer in the amount of $4,276.43 from the Permissive Tax Fund for administration of the Permissive Tax Program pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 4504.02 and 4504.05A. And 209 is to accept the Performance Bond and Subdividers Contract for the Washington-Glenplatt Section Two in Washington Township in the amount of $412,327.47.
I move for approval.
A second.
All those in favor? County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 210, submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Office of Criminal Justice Services, Recovery of, Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Fund for the Regional Agencies Narcotics and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in an amount of $67,140.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor? We have a late item from Common Police Court?
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 239, submit a grant application to the Supreme Court of Ohio for funds made available under the Technology Grant Fund Opportunity in the amount of $87,780.
I move for approval. A second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on February 23rd, 2021. Resolution 211, approval of bills, and that list is available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative Services, Tyler?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have quite a few resolutions for your review today. The first is 212, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 213 authorizes a payment by warrant to Kendall Electric in the amount of $1,729.05. 214 authorizes an agreement with Superior Dental Care Incorporated for dental benefits for enrolled employees and their dependents. 215 authorizes a memorandum of understanding with the Clark County Office of Emergency Management Agency for the transfer of ownership for equipment and supplies purchased with funds made available under the fiscal year 2017 State Homeland Security Grant Program. 2016 extends the agreement with CNG Services LLC for operation, maintenance, and marketing services for the transfer facilities natural gas fueling station through March 31st of 2026. 217 authorizes a request for proposals for the 2021 Transfer Station Material Management Project for the Environmental Services Department. 218 authorizes a sole source purchase from Justice AV Solutions Incorporated for annual maintenance for courtroom audiovisual equipment for the Common Police Court in an amount not to exceed $69,540.68 through December 31st of 2021. And last, we have 219, and this authorizes the renewal, the renewal of a software subscription licensing agreement with Crow LLP in an amount not to exceed $28,500 through March 20th of 2022.
I move for approval.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Resolution 220 authorize a supplemental loan agreement with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the Western Regional Sanitary Conveyance and Treatment Improvements Project in the amount of $2,532,680.10. Resolution 221 authorize a request for qualifications RFQ for consultant services for various 2021 water projects. Resolution 222 approve the planned specifications and estimated cost of $2,884,000 in solicit bids for the construction of water facilities for the Lynn Haven and Meyer Water Main Replacement Project. 223 accept an easement deed for sanitary sewer and water lines through property belonging, belonging to Tony and Christine Ramey, trustee in connection with the development of the Erosion Control Phase Two, Site Seven and Eleven Project, and record the same. The following two resolutions are to authorize agreements. 224 with Double J Construction Incorporated for construction of the Gunther and Schroeder Water Main Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $1,093,298 through December 19th, 2021. And Resolution 225 with In situ Forum Technologies LLC for construction of the Sanitary Sewer Linings Services Project at their lowest and best bid of $1,394,410 through March 1st, 2022. The following two resolutions are to accept easement deeds, authorize agreements for payments at $1, and issue warrants in that amount for water and sewer lines in connection with the Erosion Control Phase Two, Site Seven and Eleven Project, and record the same. Resolution 226 with Donna M. Lawrence, and Resolution 227 with Kevin, Sky, and Kimberly in Passmore.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
OMB, John?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have six resolutions for your consideration. 228 authorize appropriation amendments. 229 authorize additional appropriations. 230 authorize cash transfers. 231 authorize appropriation decreases. 232 authorize appropriation amendment by transfer from general fund contingencies. And finally, 233 to amend Resolution 19-0459 to add the representation of indigent parents facing a probate court case involving termination of their parental rights and adoption proceedings to the Montgomery County Assigned Council Fee Schedule and Requirements.
I move for approval.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Human Services, Tom?
Thank you. Under the Department of Job and Family Services, I have Resolution 234, which will authorize a payment by warrant to Sunset Enterprises in the amount of $1,008.08. And then under Stillwater Center, Resolution 235 will authorize a price agreement with Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services Incorporated for temporary, temporary nursing services through January 31st of 2022 with options to renew.
I move for approval.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Business Services, Chris?
Good afternoon, under Workforce Development 0236, authorizing a lease agreement with Heidelberg Distributing Company for the leasing of 2,000 square feet of warehouse space through December 31st, 2021.
Chris, tell us about that.
Sure, no problem. Luckily for us, Heidelberg, which is a beverage distributing company, is giving us space, basically pro bono, to store our workforce vehicle and our animal resource center vehicle while they're not in use, especially in the winter months where we have to winterize those things before we get them out and into the field. I know this is coming a little bit past the winter months, but it'll still be valuable to us because we're not going to have those vehicles out every day.
Right. And so we're-
Commissioners will also have a, a future mobile JFS vehicle that will accompany our mobile fleet.
Okay, and where will those, so once it's not cold, very soon, I hope, where will we park those at night when they're not in use?
They have, they have agreed to allow us to park them at their facility and give us a car code access whenever we deem necessary.
That's great. Okay, thank you. I move for approval.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under County Commissioners, 21-0237, reappoint Jeffrey Memes, Dayton City Commissioner, to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2022. And 21-0238, appoint Randolph Sawyer to the Dayton Montgomery County Port Authority to fill an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Comments by County Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Site Selection, which is a corporate real estate economic development magazine, announced yesterday that Ohio is ranked number one in the Governor's Cup for 2020. This means Ohio led the nation in the number of economic development projects per capita, which Ohio has 419 projects per capita. Ohio ranked number two in the number of total projects. Texas is the only state that beat us out on that one. And within Ohio, the Montgomery County Dayton Metro area ranked fifth among comparable-sized cities for its economic development projects. This is fantastic news, Commissioners. It shows that our economic development efforts, our combined teams, our own county team and the Dayton Development Coalition, working with the state is doing a great job. So Commissioners, are you surprised at all about this great news?
No, not really. You know, this isn't the first time Ohio has won, and it isn't the first time that our Dayton region has received these awards. Doesn't happen every year, but I know going back under Governor Taft, you know, when I was first a commissioner, we got it a few times and got that number one, and that's pretty exciting, and, and we do have to thank our partners, Jeff Hoagland, and before that JP Nossif, and of course JP is now at Jobs Ohio. They've, they've really partnered with all of our economic development teams to making sure our county is poised to help those companies that want to locate somewhere, and why not Ohio? So it's kind of exciting to see what the governor has planned for the outreach on why Ohio, and, you know, there's a 40 improvement. And we know that Montgomery County is an attractive area for companies that are looking to expand their businesses here because of all the investment that we have put into key infrastructure, like the Highway 40 road expansion that you see right there. It will allow more trucks to access roads by the airport safely, and we're investing in a program to ensure that we have a trained and capable workforce. We just talked about our mobile workforce unit, but we're also so excited to this summer be able to open our West Town Employment Opportunity Center on the way. Because sometimes you hear spring, sometimes you hear summer, they're working hard, and we will get that done as soon as possible. And these, these initiatives just show how we can support future companies, but, you know, the fact when we get this Site Selector Award, it's really a big deal. It is a big deal, big deal for Ohio this year. Despite the pandemic, we were still having companies come here, both in person and virtually, and I want to applaud our, our whole team, Chris, well, Michael, Chris, Eric, the whole team, our workforce team under Marvine, it all works together, and it's really making us a place where companies want to be. And so that investment in utilities and, and broadband now and the roads, I think, are really a reason we're going to continue to see great success, so thanks, everybody.
Absolutely, I would agree, and, you know, it's taking all these steps, and it's layer after layer that puts you in a position to be able to really take advantage of it. So I just wanted to add to it today that there are jobs available here in our region. I know that's, you know, always a challenge for so many people, and COVID's made it worse, but I'm actually going to put a pitch in for, there are jobs with Montgomery County that I want to talk about, very important jobs. So we are looking to hire some child welfare heroes right here in Montgomery County, and our human resources recruiters are going to be having virtual interviews because we need child welfare caseworkers to join our intake department. Now, if you or anyone you know is looking for a job in this area, the qualifications include a bachelor's degree or higher in social work or related field, and at least one year of experience. But you can go online to see the qualifications in more explanation. So we suggest that the easiest way is to go to our website at www.mcohio.org, so Montgomery County Ohio.org, and on that page you'll find latest news, and the link to more information is right there. When anyone clicks on Read More, you'll find out about the requirements, and we hope there's quite a few people interested in interviewing. So there's a registration link that you'll have to fill in some of your contact information, and then select an interview date and time. Now, the interview dates are coming up quick. They're going to be next week, Wednesday, March 10th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Thursday, March 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I know all of us would join in saying that these are very important positions, and we hope that we have lots of qualified interview candidates interviewing next week. This is working with our precious little ones in the community and their families, and it's just a critical, critical position. Caseworkers are very important, and very good caseworkers are what we're looking for for our community. These are full-time positions, so they come with great benefits, and we also offer a generous leave program because we understand the importance of having a good work and life balance. So please help us spread the word on this. Anyone you know who is in this area and is looking, you know, they, they like this kind of work, they've, they've got some experience and some qualifications, we would love them for, to interview with us and have them come and be part of our team.
Great, good news. I want to speak just for a moment about our Child Support Division. Our Parenting Time Opportunities for Children Program, PTOC, is a nationally recognized parenting time program, which offers several free services such as free parent education classes and onsite virtual mediation services. Plus, the PTOC has partnered up with United Way of Greater Dayton and the Dayton Metro Library to provide nearly 8,000, think about that, 8,000. and the Dayton Metro Library to provide nearly eight thousand, think about that, eight thousand free age appropriate books. We know we're very proud of our PTOC program. It has served more than one thousand Montgomery County citizens and it helps parents focus on being civil to one another with the best interest of the children at heart. Child support is about so much more than money. So we thank our Child Support Division for strengthening the bonds between engaged parents and their children. That's a wonderful program. So with that, I have to throw out about the site selectors. Several years ago, I'm not sure if the other Commissioners were there, we had a group of site selectors tour our community and we were able to meet with them after they finished touring. And I can't tell you the positive comments that we received about like, who would have thought all the things that are going on here in Montgomery County, there's so many things to do. You know, and there are just so many locations for a lot of the companies that they were looking to relocate because we've got, you know, two great intersections there with I seventy seventy five, the airport trains, just so many things going on. So it was, it was very positive several years ago, and I'm sure it's continuing to be. With that, of course, I have to do the same thing I do all the time, you know, just because we're getting shots doesn't mean you can't still be protect yourself and others. So please wear your mask. Guess what? There's no Montgomery County Commission meeting next Tuesday, March ninth. So our next Montgomery County Commission meeting will be Tuesday, March sixteenth at one thirty.
I'm in. Second.
All those in favor. I.
Thanks, everybody. See ya.